Sorry.
There we go.
Here we go again. All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Thursday, April 7th, 2022 meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. And in accordance with Executive Order N-29-20, the Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually. And you have all kinds of options to join us. You can even come and be in the audience, so pick the way you want to do it. And with that, I will call this meeting to order and ask you to join me in a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, I'll take a roll call trip. That sounded funny.
Alan Bondio?
Present.
Noah Levy? Brian Mitchell? Mike Newman?
Present.
Melanie McCavver?
Here.
Peggy O'Neil? Thomas Mulder?
Here.
Thank you, Trip. Well, we have a quorum, barely. All right. Director, do we have any agenda modifications?
We do not have modifications to the agenda. I do just want to call out that there's a number of things that are shown on the face of the agenda as being continued. No special action is needed on those.
Okay.
I also point out that on the telecom ordinance, we did send out, and I apologize for this, a 260-page supplemental at 3:00 this afternoon. We will not ever do that again. We have, in fact, Laura redid our noticing to indicate that if we don't have the written information by the Wednesday before the Planning Commission meeting, we won't be forwarding it to the Planning Commission. It will have to be presented at the meeting.
Thank you. That's good. All right. So, since we have no modifications, we'll have public comment, and this is the time when anybody who wishes to speak on any item that is not on tonight's agenda can speak. So, it looks like we have a few people. The first one is Public 7429.
Hi, good evening. This is Robi Tenorio, and I just wanted to bring up the issue of inspection because we're often told that the inspections are what are going to keep things tip-top and not have problems. And fortunately, I think if there's about 900 permits, that would require about three inspections a day being done, and I'm not sure if that's happening. Unfortunately, when I hear about inspections, they're being done on my neighbors who have small farms. Meanwhile, my other neighbors who have over half an acre growing, and they have a rain catchment pond that is magically filling, and they're right along the river. And so, there's issues like that that are going on, and I guess my point is that the communities and the neighbors are responsible for being the watchdogs, and that's a very uncomfortable position to be in. And I don't think anyone wants to be in that position. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Jim Zolick.
Great, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jim Zolick. I live at 1766 Old Arcata Road in Bayside. That's located, I'm located about three doors down from the post office toward Arcata. And I'm calling in to speak tonight to let you know that myself and my wife and the majority of our Bayside community, both within the city jurisdiction and outside of it, are in favor of the Old Arcata Road Improvement Project and the proposed roundabout that the city of Arcata is proposing. And we urge you, when it comes before you, I know it's in process now to approve the coastal development permit that the city of Arcata has applied for. I know that in recent meetings, I know back in, I think, the first meeting in March and perhaps other times, you've heard some opposition to the project. And you may have the impression at this point that the majority of the community is opposed to the roundabout. I know that is a message that some people are speaking. That is not the case. There is a small but very vocal group in opposition, but the vast majority of the community is in favor. So, I think it's important that you guys know that. And as you consider the city's application in the coming weeks, when it's before you on your, you know, there's a public hearing, you will hear from me and from many of my neighbors, I think, both written comment and oral comment during the meeting. The Old Arcata Road Improvement Project and Roundabout is a well-conceived and very much needed project to slow traffic and improve safety in Bayside, especially for bicyclists and pedestrians. I've lived here in Bayside for 24 years. I walk my dog daily. I'm a frequent cyclist. I watch my neighbors' children walk to school. It is not safe. Cars speed around the curve at that Jacobi Creek Road intersection at highway speeds. The roundabout will slow traffic, improve safety, and improve the rural character of our community. I think what really ruined it is when they turned that into a highway-type of curve going around that corner. The city of Arcata has done an excellent job on this project. The EIR is solid. They've taken a tremendous amount of public input over a long period of time, literally years have gone into this, and they've responded to the public input with changes. Now, of course, they can't please everybody, but they've done a very good job taking public input. And they've listened and considered input from city residents and community members who live outside the city. I know some people are saying the county residents haven't been heard. Well, they have been, and in fact, I'm a county resident as well, even though I live within the city jurisdiction. Also, the city's consulted the County Public Works. And as you heard from Bob Bronckel back in early March, from Humboldt County Public Works, the county had already identified this intersection as a good candidate for a roundabout.
You have 10 seconds left.
Okay. This project makes tremendous sense. Roundabouts are proven to slow traffic and improve safety, and the modified T-intersection alternative that's listed in the EIR as an alternative will not meet the safety objectives of our community. So, thanks very much, and have a great night.
Thank you, Jim. Next is Public 7108. Try to watch the timer, please.
Good evening. This is Bonnie Backberry, and I just wanted to give a little input on the hoop house nightlights that are still out there. And a week ago, I called the code enforcement number. I managed to find the parcel number and the address, and I left that on the message phone. So, nothing happened. A week later, I called and did the same thing, and I did get a call back and saying, you know, they would deal with it or whatever. And I don't know if deal with it is send them a letter and, you know, 10 days later, maybe something else happens because it's still going on. And I had other neighbors that were going to complain. I don't know if they ever did, but I would think that they would, the county, the planning department, would have a phone number or an email that they could contact them and not wait for, you know, a day or something to have something happen. And then, it's going to be up to, you know, me and my neighbors to report back, not feel like the county should be doing that, that it shouldn't be the burden of the citizens to monitor and find the location and report it and then wait around and hope something gets done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, 7429.
There's no hands.
Oh, you're right. So, is there anybody else who wishes to speak on public comment? Please come forward.
Is it time to speak on the Holderson subdivision?
No.
Okay.
That'll be on the agenda, but we'll give you a...
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
I have a question for planning staff. I was wondering if you could give us an idea. Periodically, we ask how many there are in the pipeline, so to speak. And I was wondering if you could tell us how many applications have been withdrawn and how many applications we have remaining in both so-called 1.0 and 2.0.
I'm not aware of how many have been withdrawn. There's approximately 1,000 applications left in the pipeline.
Thank you. And do you know the proportion?
Of 1.0 and 2.0? By far, the, probably about 200, 2.0, the rest are 1.0.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So, now we'll move on to other business, and this was agendized, I believe, by Commissioner Mitchell to talk about the Planning Commission seating chart. So, I'll let you...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a while since we've all met here, and during that time, we've had members leave the commission and some come on. I don't know the exact protocol before, but it seemed to me that when I was the newest member on the commission, I was on the outside, and it sort of funneled into the chair, being in the middle, and fanned out from there. And just also the fact that your station makes it so that there's more people crammed into this area than that side, and I just wanted to see if there's anything we do to address either of those issues.
Okay. Do you have some thoughts on what you think might... This, I've been in here for about almost 10 years, and other than when you're at the chair, it just was wherever they seated you. I don't think there's ever been a official... I just went where the plaque said I was supposed to sit, so...
I think last week was particularly bad in terms of the layout, and I think what happens is because there's five supervisors and seven commissioners...
Yeah.
They tend to get crammed towards that end, and I think maybe if everyone just slid down, like we were forced to last time because it was so obvious...
Yeah.
That could help, which would mean that our chair would be a little bit less in the middle, but I don't think that's an issue.
Doesn't matter to me. The director, we were talking about this before the meeting. Maybe, Director, you could give your thoughts.
I don't know that there's a rhyme or reason for it. There's a couple different things you could think about. I think that Commissioner Mitchell brought up the idea of the more experienced, longer-tenured planning commissioners sitting towards the middle. There's perhaps the idea of having the commissioners sit where their supervisors sit with the at-large appointments, you know, placed in appropriate locations, either at the end or someplace else. There's many different ways to do it. It just really is up to the commission. I don't know that there is anything written that gives direction on this.
Go ahead, Mike.
Well, since this is brought up, I'm, my thoughts are, put it along the lines of where the supervisors seat, and then have the two-at-large on each outside wing, which would make it simple there. I don't know if the supervisors have a specific placement, like 1, 2, 3, 4, and then the alternate would be the chair, which goes into the middle from wherever they were assigned for that policy or that term year. So, that was my thought there, just to make it consistent.
Go ahead, Thomas.
So, I've never sat up here before, but I used to follow these meetings a lot. It doesn't really make a preference to me from my memory when I used to come to these meetings. It was kind of like Commissioner Newman mentioned, where the people sat wherever their district appointed them. They sat there, and then at-large were on the outside. That's just the way I remember. I didn't take notes and pay a lot of attention to that. That's just how I remember it, so...
Well, from what I remember, I think I've always sat here. I think we were put here initially, and we've just maintained the same spot that we were given initially. But do you have a preference for your seat, Commissioner Mitchell?
Not necessarily. I just wanted to bring the topic up because we haven't had to do readjustments. And, you know, my recollection is, I, when I was first appointed and the newest person here, I was sat on the very edge, and the chairman's in the middle, so it made some logical sense to arrange it that way, but it's not a strong preference. It was just something we hadn't talked about, and I wanted to address.
I'll go along with whatever everybody else wants. My place has kind of been chosen for me, so when you kick me out of here, then I'll go to an end or something. I don't know. I guess from listening to the conversation, the only thing I don't think would be fair is if the at-large people always get stuck out on the end because I, they're no different than the rest of us, so I don't think it's fair to always make them be out on the wing, though it's no better or worse seat than anywhere else, to be honest, so...
Do you think it would just help if we all shifted down?
And had three, chair, three? I definitely think that would be a major improvement.
That would work. That works for me. Would that work for you, Mike? Seems like...
What do you mean by that?
That means Noah would sit here.
So, are you talking about numbering through with the districts and then the outside wings being the at-large?
No, we're just all shifting down a seat.
So, we just would have three on each side, I mean. Noah's usually right here, so, well, Thomas is usually next to you, and Peggy is down there, so...
Right.
There, I don't know if Peggy's going to go back to there, but there'll be three on this side, and there'll be three on that side, and I'll be in the center.
Tom's there because he was the one in my hand when Peggy, when I put Peggy's away. No rhyme or reason, but such a...
Right. I figured that was what happened.
All I'm saying, consistency with maybe the number of districts, and that becomes the norm, and then the at-large on the outside, which is what it was before when I first came on in 2018.
No. It wasn't.
I don't think it's ever been by, that we were sat where our supervisors were.
And I think they move around, too. That's why...
I agree with that. They do.
So, I have no preference. Just equal spacing, I think, is the key part as to what you were asking there, Commissioner Mitchell, just having enough equal space instead of being crowded at one end. Yeah.
Maybe you and Thomas can arm wrestle for who gets the end position.
Okay. It's all yours.
So, is that good? We'll just put three on each side? All right. You okay with that?
Yeah. I think I'd like to draw up a draft proposal for the chart and just say, here's what I think makes sense, and you guys can say, this is dumb, or this makes sense, and...
Okay. So, do you want to bring this back, then, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll take it upon myself to put together something that makes sense.
All right. So, Director, could you agendize this on next meeting again so we can look at that?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. All right. And then, this second other business topic was planning watershed map discussion, so... Director, did you have something you wanted to say about that, or Melanie?
I know the commission really just wanted to identify the concerns they had with the maps, so we're all ears.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'll basically just repeat what I brought up, I guess, what was that now, a month ago or so? The maps are problematic in the sense that they, the colors are not intuitive. And so, in cartography, one of the first things you learn is that the colors should be intuitive, and by that, I mean that if you have a gradation in color, for example, where there's different values, where there's a minimum and a maximum value, the maximum value is typically the deeper shade of that color, and the minimum value is the lighter shade of that color. Likewise, having too many similar colors with corresponding shade differences is very difficult to read, especially with the scale of the map that we're provided. A lot of shades of fuchsia and oranges. There are no roads on the maps, and I think that that is something else that is very difficult for us and other people. It's hard to locate the roads, and the roads are often something that we are looking at. And I think something that came up last time was the parcels in terms of the ownership. And so, if there are, for example, two applications on adjacent parcels with the same owner, we ask that they be patterned, like maybe with a hash pattern or something like that, so that we can see, you know, which ones are basically the same owner, or in those cases where they're using some of the same resources for another application. Make that somehow apparent on the map. And then, of course, the other patterns that you have right now in the map, maybe you could choose some that are a little bit more diverse, so polka dots versus all just different types of striping for those applications that have already been approved and those that are still yet to be approved. And then, finally, another thing that came up was the enhanced monitoring. So, if there is a way to show on the map with yet another pattern which parcels are under enhanced monitoring versus just monitoring, and maybe even which ones have actually been monitored, that would be really, really helpful. I don't know if any of the other commissioners had something else to add. I think I covered everything.
Thomas was first.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Thomas.
So, I wasn't on the commission whenever this discussion was made to leave the roads out, but I believe that was for safety of people that own property and live on those parcels. I do remember that as a big item. As far as parcels, I mean, I understand bringing them before us, but I do believe each project, if it's done proper, or not done properly, but done as an individual project, can be sold or, you know, transferred to another entity, so I don't know if we need to get caught in the weeds of what parcels are owned by what people. And last, I'm looking at this, and I look at so many of the black and checkered that sold the abatements. So, I mean, when we're looking, I thought our job as a commission is to look at a watershed, and that's where our caps are at, is as a watershed, not roads and that kind of stuff. It's land use and watershed. And that's where I'm confused, where we're worried about roads and all those kind of things, and I'd be highly against putting roads out there because I do respect people that live on their farms, so...
Well, if I may add, we are expected to evaluate all of the resource categories under the SEQA, not just water impacts.
Which we do get information of how many projects are on roads, which I've... Excuse me?
We can't see it anymore.
If they say there's 10 projects on a roadway, you evaluate by vehicle traffic, just like any other project is my, vehicle trips per day, I believe, is how you evaluate projects. So, that's how I remember the construction world.
Well, the issue is that we can't look at cumulative effects for all of the resource categories under the California Environmental Quality Act if we don't see them on the map.
So, Mike had a question, or had a thought as well.
Well, my comment was, going back to the discussion, we purposely did not put roads on there for super identification out there in the public. I think we can still look at it in a cumulative effect without having the roadways on there. I do agree with the different patterns in order to make sure that we can see what is differentiated with abatements versus, you know, new stuff. As far as the same ownership, I think we've made it clear to the staff that we want to have that information brought forward to us, even though you can sell parcels separately, you still want to know if there's, you know, agreements there so that that will go forward with any sale in the future. So, I'm for taking a better look at some of the ways it's presented in there to where it's a little differentiated, but as far as roads being on there, I'm not for that still.
Any other thoughts?
Well, it just seems to me that the traffic and road capacity issue can hardly be identified, you know, at a macro level if we're just looking at watersheds. So, I thought that the request was to have it mapped and have those data points there so that we could evaluate it that way. That was my recollection.
That's correct. And, you know, ultimately, anyone smart enough to take these maps and then go find these places using the labeled roads can easily go find the names of the roads using the maps. Ultimately, what this does is it just needlessly adds time for us and anyone with, you know, nefarious motives, I suppose. It would add a little bit of extra time for them to figure out what exact road it is, but ultimately, it just comes down to time. And so, that was, you know, one of the reasons why we had requested it, which we shouldn't have to struggle to figure out what road it is.
So, if we put roads on the map, does that mean we don't need to require the road analysis anymore? Because you're going to evaluate that.
I would say no to that, but that's, I don't think they're the same thing. The road evaluation needs to be done by...
Well, if you want the map to evaluate the roads, when we've already required an engineer to evaluate the roads, I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding what you're asking us for.
But we don't always ask an engineer to evaluate the roads. Sometimes, we ask the applicant to fill out a one-page form and say they approve the road.
If it's a category for a road, Alan.
I agree with that, but the point being is, we're not evaluating the roads for their carrying capacity. It just would be nice to see how roads loop together. I mean, when you look where, and some of these have huge number of squares, all different colors, and I'm not going to get into the colors so much because I'm not in, I don't look at it as detailed as Melanie does, but it would be nice to see where the roads that are in that area, how they intersect in that group, in that cluster, to see if maybe, man, it sure seems like there's a lot of grows, you know, happening right there, maybe some extra...
That is what the road analysis does. It identifies how many cultivation sites are on that road. That's the purpose, is to identify the carrying capacity of the road and whether or not it's adequate. That's why we require that.
But are... But our job is to review those things in terms of cumulative effects, and it's difficult for us to look at this without doing some extra legwork.
But there are maps in those road analyses showing where they're at.
Right, but it would be nice to have the road, I mean, I don't really see why it's, it would be difficult to have the roads on the map.
They don't show up at the watershed scale. You're asking for a much smaller map. The finding that you make relative to watersheds is why we chose to do this at the watershed scale, so that the findings that you make in the resolution relative to the number of permitted sites, the number of sites in process, complying with Resolution 18 dot 43, is why that information's presented like that, because it correlates to a finding you're making.
All right, and there is a way to make them show.
That's the cumulative impact.
There is a way to have them show on the scale of this map.
Go ahead, Thomas. I'd like to.
So for me, I'm hearing a lot of different things, but I'm really against the roads because the director does bring up a valid point. We do have those road evaluations, and I don't disagree with Alan that some are more detailed and stamped by an engineer than others, but I don't have an engineer's stamp. So I'm, you know, when an engineer does a road evaluation for, say, two miles of dirt road, and they say it has a carrying capacity for that site along as, as well as the other commercial activity along there, I'm trusting that stamp, and I think that's evaluating that cumulative effects. I don't know if anyone up here has an engineer's stamp, but I'm really uncomfortable with putting roadways on there, because especially when we say we want to see other intersecting roadways, maybe that's, it's a treasure troves map, and I'm going to be straight up, there's a lot of hard times in Humboldt County, and I would not want to be part of a decision that could be putting blood on our hands. So I'm gonna leave it at that.
I'd like to comment on that. We do, from time to time, have people ask about the carrying capacity of the watersheds, but we more often have people talking about the carrying capacity of the roads and the traffic that's going through their neighborhoods and such. I don't think it's, I like the maps you've been given to us, okay? I think they should have more detail. I think they should show roads with names of those roads so that you can figure out the area, know the, how the roads connect together and everything. We do it in every other kind of project. I don't know why, you know, cannabis has to be different. We were told this is supposed to be just like any other business when it was proposed, so make it like any other business, you know? Mr. Kramer does a subdivision out in Cutten. He has to show every road that connects with that, potential roads that could connect with it. He has to show traffic studies, all those things. I'm not saying that maybe we have to go that far, okay, for a small grow out somewhere, that we have to go to a traffic study, but I do not believe that, that putting the names of the roads on a map, you know, I, we don't have to put addresses, okay?
If, if, just if you want the roads, just make a motion, tell us what you want. We'll, we'll see what we can do. I think it's going to require a lot of work, but we'll see what we can do.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To answer your question, why do both the road evaluation and the map, I see them as having two distinct purposes. One is to certify that it's a category four road, and the other is the cumulative, the cumulative impact of the additional number of vehicle trips up and down the road when you look at all the proposed and, and already approved projects that are, that are out there. So like a, a level of service analysis is done on, you know, in town road. I see that similar to this.
Go ahead, Thomas.
So this question's for county council. The applicants hold harmless agreements that they've signed with the county. If the motion, if there is a motion that does go forward that provides map, and it's proven that those maps are utilized in a crime that creates great bodily harm, such as death or physical amnagement, will those applicants be able to take repercussions against the county and the commission that decided this?
Thank you for the question. I think it would depend on the facts of the situation, but there's probably a way to provide, I don't want to speak for the director, a certain level of detail that's not so detailed as, you know, that that would be the result.
I don't think anybody's asking to, to have the map say, you know, Joe Smith has parcel, you know, 301 at, you know, 2729, I don't know, Blackberry Lane, and he has 10,000 square feet of grow there. That's not what we're asking for. We're asking, you know, you, you look at these maps and you see, I don't know, let's pick one, Bridgeville, okay? Says in big letters there, Bridgeville. But then there's all that area between Bridgeville and Mad River, which is a pretty good-sized area that I know pretty well, and I know where most of the, that area, I could say, name those roads, but I couldn't tell you what all of them are. And it'd be nice to know which ones connect, because I don't know which ones connect. And maybe there is no problem with Highway 36, but there might start being a problem with, you know, all these other roads that are, are getting so inundated. And that might be what we start seeing and we start hearing. I just would like to see more, a little more detail. I don't think that, that that's asking for that much. Maybe it is.
If you want the motion to be that you want to see roads and more detail in terms of the colors, differentiation between approved sites, sites in process, and code enforcement sites where, will do whatever, will attempt to do whatever you ask for.
Well, I'll motion that we request that the changes that we, that I listed earlier be implemented by the planning staff.
All right. Go ahead, Thomas.
I do not support it. As I've said before, I will not be part of bloodshed on my hands, and I speak from personal experience. You know, it was very unfortunate, 6:45 a.m., I caught a guy by the name Wade Harris at my 69-year-old father's gate.
Unfortunately, I didn't know.
Yeah. A week later, he was in a gunfight and at a cannabis farm, so I will not hold bloodshed on my hands.
So when we approve projects, they give us the, you know, the patent parcels and the parcel numbers. So the information about where the cultivation is happening is already out there. So I'm just wondering why you think that this is a bridge too far when you could easily, with the web GIS, find it?
Or on a sale, anyone can look it up.
Mike, I think you were next.
So on this discussion, I'm not in favor of having the roads put on the maps that are coming to us every week, or every two weeks, dependent upon our, our meetings. When individual projects come to us, we have more details at that point, but it's not out in the public every time. So it, there's a difference having this with maps of streets or roads, in this case, on it every time we meet versus individual projects when they come to us. So it's a little harder to differentiate and see each one. I mean, if you're really enterprising, you can go through there. Yes, I give that to you, because we live in a world of electronics where everything is accessible, even my address at home, because I'm a voter. I'm a registered voter. Anybody, if they're interested, can look up where I live. I'm not comfortable with that, but that's the way of the world at this point. If they're really interested, it will happen, they have my address. I'm just not in favor of having the roads on this regular map that comes to us on the watershed. I'm for having the information on the watershed, information with what's been approved and what is pending and what has been abated in different colors and different, better differentiation on those. But I'm not for having the individual roads on there every time this map comes out.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I had my hand up to respond.
I'm sorry.
So I feel that, yes, the information's out there, but if you had a map with all of the roads right there, someone could walk in and pick it up off, I think it's a public document that could be picked up right there, and even more easily accessible. My other worry with the roads is we've heard that it's very hard to depict between colors and all the different projects. You add roads in here, and I don't know how we're going to be able to evaluate the watershed, because I believe that's where the whole thing came from for the map. So, I mean, it looks like a three to two vote, so it is what it is.
Go ahead, Brian.
I just wanted to ask if, if it is adding extra workload to staff to add the, the road detail, if we could, the duration within which they provide it to us be extended, at least for the first one, and then perhaps we can get back to the same, you know, however often, but give them some extra time for the first one, since they, they don't know how long it's going to take. That would be a recommendation of mine.
Director, did you want to say something?
No, I think Commissioner Mitchell for that consideration. I, I don't think there's any way that we'll have this available by April 21st, given the fact that it really already needs to be done for that meeting. So we will target May. I just, I don't know how much work is going to be involved. This is a pretty big rework of what's in our current GIS.
I don't think that there's any emergency on it. I just think that people are making some ideas that would make it better in the future. I don't think that it's a specific time that it needs to be done in or anything. But we do have a, oh, go ahead, Thomas.
One other question. If we're talking about putting a work, more workload on staff, that's, you know, over, there's a lot of workload, and we're also talking about post-approval monitoring and stuff like that, would the commission find it better use of staff time going into the planting season to utilize staff time at post-approval monitoring and those kind of things than mapping?
I will volunteer my time. I worked on these before, and adding roads is, is very, it's, it's not time consumptive, at least in my experience, and I'm very happy to donate some of my time if that's desirable for the different colors and the textures.
Let me talk to our GIS person, and I don't think it's as simple as you make it. There is scale, and there is what the GIS pulls up at certain scales. At certain scales, it does not show the road names. So there, there is going to be some playing around with this that needs to be done to get to where you want it to be.
Go ahead, Thomas.
One last question. If the motion does pass, is it possible in six months to come back with a dollar figure of how much taxpayer dollars this costs if it does?
Okay. The director says yes? All right. So we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion? See you then, Trip. I'll ask you to ask the question, please. Yes.
Yes.
Tom Mulder?
No.
Thomas Mulder, excuse me. Sorry about that. Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
No.
All right. Thank you, Trip. Motion carries 3-2. Thank you. It was a good discussion. All right. That brings us on to our consent agenda, and it looks like the first four items are continued to a date uncertain.
Chair, Chair Bonjo?
Yes.
You didn't take a public comment on that last discussion.
You're right. I, I apologize. Moving on. My bad. All right. Now open up any public comment on that. We have to go back. Do we have to revote on it since we didn't?
You will need to hear the public comment before you vote.
For the, okay. I apologize on that. I just kind of got caught up in the conversation. So I'll open up public comment on this item, and the first caller is Public 7108.
Yes, thank you for taking public input. I just love to see the web GIS, and it has roads on it. Maybe not all of them, but definitely a lot of the roads are on there. Not all of them already. The idea, if somebody's, you know, thinking of doing something bad, they just have to go on to, the information's already there, plus you can actually get a lot more information out for the web GIS. Probably when this ordinance was made and leaving the roads out was because the only ones that could see the roads were the government satellites or something. So now that this information is available to the public, not putting the roads on a map to try to figure out what kind of cumulative impact in the area, not just in one to the specific spot. I live off of a county road and a whole bunch of, you know, stuff happening, permits and all this, and I can't even find the roads. So it would be nice if I could see what, what's been approved, what's been abated, and what's coming, and there's no way to tell by that. Plus, this, these are all parcel sites, not what was going on, or what, you know, the permits are. Doesn't say, well, we got rid of, you know, 5,000 square feet over here, but this new one's gonna have an acre. So thank you very much for taking public input. I totally support putting the roads on there, and the information's already public information. Much easier to find, been going through these permanent plans and all that, so thanks.
Next caller is 759. Are you?
Hi, this is Robie Tenorio again. I also wanted to point out the GIS availability. You can click on any parcel and learn about any permits applied for, where they're in, how many square feet they are, everything about it. And it's much easier to do. You can do it from your home, and the general public is not really watching these meetings. They're going through your agendas and pulling up staff reports and seeing the maps. I, I don't even see how that can be inferred. Roads are a part of land use and thus SEQA evaluation. They, roads are also part of watersheds. They need to be analyzed for their impacts, and so of course you still need a road evaluation, but you do need to look at cumulative impacts. On my road, I, I don't believe you could have analyzed the road and all the farms on it, and if it was, things are worse than I thought, because I've been asking for that cumulative evaluation, because my road's been completely trashed by huge trucks for water and soil and workers. And if you've evaluated this road and all the farms on it and said it's good to go, that, that's much worse than I thought. So I, this concern that Commissioner Mulder has of blood on his hands is, I, I'm not really following that, because it's all out there already. So it, it seems a little bit... So it seems a little bit, I was not, it just seems strange. Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that's calling in that would like to speak on this item? Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? All right. See you then. Wait, are you, you have something to say? I got a test.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Didn't realize this particular point was going to be up tonight, but I would, you know, everybody who just called in and said how important it was to have these roads on it keep pointing out that the roads are easily available online to everybody, and it's lickety-split, not a problem anyway. I'd like to point out that that means that they're available to you guys. It'd be nice, I think, if we could use the staff time to move through some projects that have been on the books now for five years or more, not to mention that then you guys would have the report to do your work as far as analyzing the watersheds. So I would just ask that you accept the work that's been done and move on with yours. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. See you no more public. I will close the public comment, and I will bring it back to the commission. Is there any more discussion on this, or? So we have a motion and a second on the table. We'll have a revote on that, so, Trip, go ahead.
Let me figure that out, brother. All right, I think I've got it. All righty. Mike Newman?
No.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Melanie McCaffrey?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
No.
Thank you, Trip. The motion is the same, carries a three, two, yes vote. All right, thank you. Oh, it came up for the first time. That's nice. All right. And I apologize for not having public comment on that. I just got caught up in the discussion. Yeah, that's exactly right. Mike, you got to nudge me. Kick me.
A little far away.
Yeah.
You're going to break the sun now.
Thanks. It takes a village. All right. So we will now move to the consent agenda, and as I was saying, we have, the first three items are continued to a date uncertain, and I've been told that there is people in the audience that would like to speak on the fourth item, so I'm going to, Mike told me he was going to pull that too, so that there could be public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I noticed that four items on the consent calendar are all recommended for continuance, it just begs the question, is there an overarching reason why all these had to be pulled, like a threat of litigation or a certain topic that's arisen, or is it four different reasons, or they all weren't ready tonight, or?
We did not feel like they were ready for the commission's review.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So as usual, we will go through the consent agenda, and anybody from the public or from the commission can ask to have an item pulled. So on the first three, we know that those are being continued, so we'll go to item four.
Chair Bongio, I know this seems awful, kind of strict, but could we identify the item and identify that's being continued to a date uncertain?
No problem. So the first item is VIPA Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Salmon Creek area, and it's recommended to be continued to a date uncertain. Is there anybody who wishes to comment, have this pulled and comment on it if they're here?
Or online.
Okay. So that will come back to us. Item number two is Ten Redwoods LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Densmore area. Anybody who wants this item pulled? See none. It will stay, come back to us at a date uncertain. Number three is Dustin Silva Conditional Use Permit in the Garberville area. Is there anybody who wants to pull this one? See none. It will stay on, continued to another time. Item number four, the Holgerson Minor Subdivision and Coastal Development Permit in the Myrtle Town area, and this will be pulled.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number five is the Winter Home Minor Subdivision and Accessory Dwelling Unit Special Permit in the Carlotta area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item pulled? See none. It will stay on consent. Item number six, Jackson Major Subdivision Final Map Subdivision in the McKinleyville area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item pulled? See none. This will stay on consent. Item number seven, Laurel Tree Charter School Coastal Development Permit Modification in the McKinleyville area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item pulled? See none. We'll leave that on consent. Item number eight, Humboldt GT LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Densmore area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this one pulled? See none.
I just have one question on this.
You've got to put a hand.
Oh, there is one that came up, so we'll pull this one. It wasn't there when Brian put his hand up. All right. Number nine, Dare Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Whitethorn area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this one pulled? And I see a hand up. I think it's a different hand, and it is a different hand, so we will pull. So that means that items number four, excuse me, item number four, item number eight, and item number nine will be pulled from the consent calendar. Four, eight, and nine. So with that.
I'll motion to approve the consent calendar consisting of items five, six, and seven.
All right.
And one, two, and three?
I believe we have to do those as a separate motion.
No.
They're part of the consent.
Part of it, so.
Okay, even though they're continued?
Yeah.
All right. In that case, items one, two, three, four, items one, two, three, five, six, and seven.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All right. Trip, you're up. Are we going to? There will be on the ones that were pulled. Okay.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Melanie McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries unanimous. So that brings us to item number four, the Holgerson Minor Subdivision and Coastal Development Permit. So are we going to have a staff report since?
No, we're recommending continuance of this.
I understand that, but there's somebody from, at least the public.
We're not prepared to present tonight.
So can, we can let them speak?
You can let them speak.
But we won't have any kind of presentation?
Correct.
Okay. Just getting clarification. So at this time, I'd welcome anybody from the public who would like to speak on this item. Just come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Suzie Smith, and I live directly across the street from the subdivision. I received a letter last week on it that is sent out every time there is some type of development, and it goes out to a geographical area, and it was written so unclear that I wasn't certain of what was really happening. Thought I'd wait until this meeting to find out what it was, and then was recently presented with some plot maps of what the houses were, how it was laid out. They are not a single-family house with an accessory dwelling unit. They are mirror image duplexes. The subdivision does not fit with the character of our neighborhood. We are a single-family neighborhood. If they wanted to put in one or two additional houses with a very small ADU, i.e. studio apartment for grandma, that would be acceptable, but not four duplexes without adequate access. A fire truck, a garbage truck, an ambulance cannot get to the last one. There's parking, one spot per unit. There's four units, so there are eight spots because there's two units to each one. Eight spots there, four on the street on Edgewood, and four on their little access road. So you're going to have rentals. Every rental has roommates. I calculate at least 18 cars, add the kids, that, you know, I know how many kids I had driving cars, add the roommates. There's going to be a minimum of 25 cars that will impact the middle of Edgewood. Where are they going to park? Guess what? I will lose where I live, and so will three, four. I'm at 3465, 3434, 3462, 344, 3424 Edgewood. All of us will lose the character of our neighborhood that we've worked hard to gain. The units are not single-family homes with an ADU. They are mirror image duplexes. Access is not sufficient enough to allow parking for those that live in the nine units. Think two cars per unit with children's cars, roommates, et cetera, 25 cars. Access is not sufficient for emergency vehicles. Access is not sufficient for garbage pickup at the units, so the trash cans will be lined up along Edgewood. If they're parking on Edgewood, where are those garbage cans going to go? But in the middle of the driveline. Do renters care about their garbage? No. The traffic congestion and noise in the middle of a neighborhood street would impact the quality of life in a negative manner, and it'd be cumulative impacts. And then there is the drainage issue for the homes along Circle Drive. They already have a problem with drainage on that street, and now this will add to it. This is sufficient for one or two homes, not eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this item?
My name is Sina Marino. I am on the parcel that is just north of his proposed subdivision, and my other neighbor who's on the north is coming up next. My main concern is with the drainage. We moved into that house in 1977, and when we put an addition on the house, we had French drains put in around the house to drain onto Circle Drive because the water would pool on my patio with any heavy rain. Now when I have a heavy rain, I still have a very wet yard, but I don't have the pooling on the patio. However, if he cements the housing, the foundations and the driveways and the sidewalks for four different units, the water from those units and from the roofs of those units is going to come my way. So he has proposed a drainage pond of sorts, which isn't going to perk very well. We have a lot of clay there, but if we have rains like global warming is bringing us, it's going to overflow, and it's going to go toward the bay, which is north. Circle Drive has no storm drains on it. The closest storm drain is about a block away. It's off on a block north and a block east to Quaker, and there are two further down, 18th Street, that are taking the drainage from the other subdivisions down there. There's none on Myrtle Avenue. Edgewood has two at Quaker, a block uphill from his division, and none down on Myrtle Avenue. So there's going to be a big water flow there, too, but I'm more concerned with my yard. And several years ago, Niels came to my house to introduce himself as my new neighbor and requested that I put a pipe through my yard to empty onto Circle Drive, and I said there's no storm drains there, and I don't want a pipe through there. I have six trees and large bushes along that property line. And so he asked me twice, and I told him no twice, and I told him why twice, and then he sicked a lawyer on me to send me a map of the proposed thing, and they offered me $5,000 to put a five-foot-wide swale in my yard. Well, actually, the swales on the maps are 10-foot wide, which means I'd use up most of my side yard, and it would be unusable to me because it goes like this, right? So what else? Oh, the catchment pond, which would be right on the other side of my fence, would be a great place for mosquitoes to congregate.
10 seconds, ma'am.
Okay. And the last concern I had was when I was reading up on easements is can anybody force this easement on me? I don't know. If he wants to offer me $500,000 for my house, I'll give him the house, and he can build his swale, and I'll have to move out of the neighborhood because none of my neighbors are going to love me anymore. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item?
Hi, George Clausy. I'm her next-door neighbor at 1854 Circle Drive. I'll be quick. My concern is the drainage. I've had, I have one on-street parking spot in front of my house. People have mentioned to me, why don't I stock it with Bass when it rains? This will exacerbate that problem. Drainage frequently floods both that area, my carport, and even part of my garage. To put these units, the concrete, the roofs, and the drainage behind me is just going to make it worse, and that's all I am saying.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. See you then, and I will close the public comment, and I'd entertain a motion to continue this to a date uncertain.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move item number four to a, continue it to a date uncertain.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Nope. Trip, take a roll call.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCaffrey?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries unanimous.
How will we be alerted when that's going to be on the agenda again?
You'll be notified.
Yeah, when, before it goes back to the, comes back to the Planning Commission, we will send out another notice. In fact, one of the things I'd recommend that you do is that if you would send us an email. And ask for the specific notice, we will make sure that you receive that notice.
The planning clerk?
Yes.
So send it to the planning clerk?
You can send it to the planning clerk and copy jford@co.humboldt.ca.us.
Great service, Trip. All right. So the motion carried unanimous. Usually we take a break sometime right around here, so let's take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll get back to business. All right. Thank you. All right. Welcome back, everybody. Next item that we will work on is item number, was it seven or eight? I thought s- Nope, eight. Item number eight. Humboldt GT LLC, conditional use permit and special permit in the Densmore area. And we'll take a staff report, please. No?
I'm sorry, is this Humboldt GT?
Yes.
Sorry. I didn't hear the beginning and the audio was cut out. Apologies.
I'm looking at the staff here and they're all shaking their head like, we're not doing it?
Here you are. Please let me know when you can see this.
There we go.
So this project, as you said, is in the Densmore area. It consists of 9,978 square feet of existing cultivation and 9,078 square feet of that would be in two greenhouses, mixed light, and 900 square feet would be outdoor, full sun. They're proposing a nursery, which will be limited to 10% of cultivation amount. And they're also proposing a new 2,400-square-foot drying and processing building. And I'm glad this was pulled from consent because there was a change that was noticed by the agent, which I believe is on the call tonight, that there will not be two employees, actually. There are two owner-operators that would operate the cultivation. And as a result, we recommend striking the condition of approval number A11, which is related to employees having a certified onsite wastewater treatment system. And this is in accordance with Department Policy Statement number 21-02, that employee, I mean owner-operators do not have to abide by that requirement and that they can process in their house with their existing septic system. So moving on from that, the irrigation water is sourced from a registered spring diversion as well as existing and proposed rainwater capture from the house that's in existence and the proposed processing drying facility. Existing water storage is 100, over 136,000 gallons and that is in four 20,000-gallon water bladders and 15 hard tanks. An onsite well was proposed, but it has been conditioned that no well can be installed or used for irrigation without the standard geological or hydrologic evaluation and approval by the county. Water usage is estimated at 168,000 gallons. And there are currently two Honda generators in use. An PG&E power drop has been applied for. This project is on Route 36. And regardless, an alternative energy system is required to be developed in order to reduce or eliminate reliance on the generator within five years to meet 80% of annual demand. And I just wanted to call out some select conditions of approval, the first being the alternative energy plan and that we included a date as the commission requested in the past. So by April 7, 2027, no, no less than 80% of energy could be met by renewables. There are a few setback issues with the project and it includes a special permit requiring the setback from the existing spring diversion for maintenance of that. And there, those water bladders I mentioned in the previous slide are within SMAs, as you'll see on the, on the map. They're to be retired, removed, and replaced with hard tanks placed outside the SMA. According to the site management plan conditions, there also is two 500-gallon gasoline and diesel storage tanks that are adjacent to the house within the SMA. Those are to be relocated. And there are legacy cultivation sites and access roads that are going, are to be retired and revegetated and the cultivation sites relocated to the two greenhouses. And there is an entire study as well as a wetland delineation, a relocation plan, and a biological assessment justifying that relocation. And they would be relocated with an existing grading flats. I have a photo at the end. In addition, per the biological assessment, the project has been conditioned to enact any construction activities associated with the relocation or the construction of that storage facility outside of the spotted owl breeding season and also to conduct any pre-construction nesting birdies, bird surveys if that construction season is just outside the spotted owl, but still within the overall general bird nesting season. There you can see just a quick photo of where this project is located, here on Highway 36. And here you can see the site plan that's provided in your packet. Everything is sort of concentrated in the flat area to the lower left of the parcel. And you can see in the upper right, that inset, I know it's quite small, but those are the locations of the two greenhouses that were too close to that wetland in between them and are to be relocated to the right where that dark outline is. And there is a study conducted to justify that. And you can see also in here, you get the location of those bladders within the streamside management areas that would be relocated outside of the SMAs and to, and placed in the hard tanks instead of bladders. I believe that concludes the presentation.
Any questions for staff? Go ahead, Brian.
I noticed in the project description, it both states that they are in the process of hooking up to PG&E and plan to have an 80% reliance on renewable energy. So I understand it to take a long time to get a PG&E hookup. But am I reading this correctly that they are planning to do both?
Sorry if it was confusing. Brian, what's meant by it is that they're hoping that the PG&E drop will go forward and happen quickly and then they can purchase renewables directly. But if that does not work, within three years, they're going to develop an alternative plan to implement at five-year mark regardless and without the PG&E drop.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
All right. Any other questions for staff before we open this up for public? Seeing none, I will open this up for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this one? Anybody in the audience here that wishes to speak on? Okay. Oh, there comes up a hand. Public 7108.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
Yes, thank you. My concerns about this particular permit was the use of water bladders. And I'm not sure if this is existing and I imagine it's been operating under an interim permit for X number of years and the ordinance prohibits the use of the water bladders. So I would have thought that would have been taken care of before now. And of course, the thing with the generators running for three to, well, five years because when did they apply for the electrical drop? And it seems like it'll probably take quite a while. Yeah. And they're going to have additional water storage in six more tanks. So it seems like they don't have enough right now for what they're proposing to do. And then how do you deal with the water bladders? Nor is this their pro-. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next is Paula Pavlich, PR professional.
Good evening, Chairman Bondio, Planning Commission and Director Ford. This is Paula representing Humboldt GT. Just to address the public comment, the current applicants for Humboldt GT are new owners. They've purchased a property approximately eight to 10 months ago and since then, they have been very proactive in working with PG&E. They applied for the ag drop approximately six months ago. We are actively working with the Mr. Santos at PG&E right now, as well as the water bladders do intend to be removed, but during the purchase, that obviously was put on hold. This project has been operating with the previous owner and with the current owner, owner under an interim and also holds an active state license. That's all I have to say. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right. Thank you, Paula. Is there any questions for Paula since she's the applicant, the consultant? All right. Seeing none, is there anybody else who wants to speak on this? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. Any thoughts? Do you want to make a motion then?
All right. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to find that we have considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the CMM LWO as described by section 15164 of the SEQUA guidelines and make all of the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and special permit and approve the Humboldt GT LLC conditional use permit and special permit as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
Thank you, Melanie. Go ahead.
I'll second that and ask if that is with removing condition number 11 as staff recommended.
That's inclusive of the strikeout of item A11 as described by the planner in the staff report.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion on this? All right, Trip. On the roll call vote, please.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCavver?
Yes.
And Alan Bondio?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. All right. That brings us to item number nine. Dare Farms LLC, conditional use permit in the White Thorn area. And I'll take a staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Abby Strickland and I am the assigned planner for Dare Farms LLC, application number 13225. The project site is located in the White Thorn area. As you can see, it's the blue highlighted parcel there, just west of the 101. The proposed project is a, it's a proposed project, but it's also existing. It's a 10,249-square-foot project of existing outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. They do utilize light deprivation techniques. The water source is an entirely rainwater catchment system and they project 122,600 gallons of water used annually, which is 11.96 gallons per square foot. They also have 135,000 gallons of water storage on site. The energy for the operation is PG&E. They do have a backup generator, although this project is, does require minimal energy as it is outdoor and currently all processing occurs off-site. They do have a proposed 2,400-square-foot processing structure and when complete and permitted to commercial standards, they will be authorized to start processing on site. This is just a photo of the applicant's site plan. You can see the two cultivation areas there, one with all the greenhouses, the other with the proposed processing facility and then the water tanks on another flat. Staff recommend that you, commission, find the project consistent with the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the CMM LWO pursuant to section 15164 of State SEQUA Guidelines and make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the recommended conditions. And I am available to answer any questions. The applicant also has an agent in the audience this evening. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Abby? All right. Seeing none, we'll open this up for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this? 7429, go ahead. Go ahead, 7429.
I'm working on it here. Okay. Hi, this is Robi Ternorio and I appreciate the stored water, appreciate that it's not going to be running generators, but my question is, it says up to five harvests and it's outdoor. And the planner suggested that it had a low use, a low energy use, but I'm wondering how you get five harvests outdoor? That sounds more like mixed light. So that's my question or concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this? Would the applicant like to speak on this? Maybe you could explain the number of harvests.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Nice to see everybody in person. I have to admit to enjoying the Zoom option, but it's lovely to be here and see some people. My name is Nate Madsen. I'm with Rain and Zep PLC. We represent the applicant. And to simply answer the one question, five harvests is an optimistic goal for years that are similar to this year, when there's winters that don't produce much rain and a lot of sun and maybe they'll be able to have five harvests. It says two to five harvests. So two is more realistic on the average year, but five would be an ideal dream come true for the applicant. Other than that, I'm here to answer questions.
Is there any questions for Nate while he's at the podium? Nope. Thank you, sir.
Thanks so much.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this project? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back to the commission. Where would you like to go with it? Oh, go ahead, Thomas.
Just a clarification to the public commenter. I see this as we're approving an outdoor project, so I've seen it as we're approving an outdoor project, which means no supplemental lighting. So however they get those harvests is however they get those harvests, but I don't see us as approving anything with supplemental lighting. So I didn't see any concerns with that.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Brian. Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we adopt the resolution to, one, find that the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance pursuant to section 15164 of the state SEQUA guidelines, make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and approve the Dare Farms LLC, subject to the recommended conditions.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have motion second. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, Trip? Roll call.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Alan Bondio?
Yes.
Melanie McCavver?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
And Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you, Trip. Motion carries unanimous. All right. That brings us to item number H, which is public hearings and the proposed communications facilities ordinance for Humboldt County.
So just full disclosure, I don't see that this ordinance would affect me in any way, but in August, I acquired a partial that has some sort of repeater device on it that I don't own and I don't get any lease money on it. But in my process of trying to get the existing house, the permit package for that, I've, it's came to my awareness that whatever this structure is, has no building permits on it, but it's probably from like the 70s or something like that and it doesn't have any But it's probably from like the 70s or something like that, and it doesn't have any power devices, so being fully transparent. And the partial is on my Form 700, so just want to be transparent.
Thank you, Thomas. So with that, we'll take a staff report.
Okay. Good evening. I'm going to see if I can get the screen share to work here. Okay. Are you seeing my s- oh, wait, which screen? No, you're seeing the wrong one. Let's see if I can. Let's see if I can get the... There we go. Okay, now you're seeing the one I think you want to see?
Yes.
And you made the director laugh, and that's worth a lot.
Well, yeah, good evening. Good evening again. Keenan Hilton, Long Range Planning, and I'm here to continue the public hearing on the draft telecommunications facilities ordinance. As the director mentioned, you received a giant supplemental packet today. I, you know, I received some emails on this, and in the spirit of transparency, I asked that and to pass them all along, but after having a discussion with the director, I know that that may have been overwhelming or frustrating to receive something that was impossible to go through in several hours. So noted that we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep the supplementals, you know, the day before, you know, that's, that's when we'll process them. So anyway, my apologies for that. As you could tell from the topic of the, of the packet, the topic of concern was the potential health effects of 5G, which is the technology deployed with small cell wireless facilities. I believe that several of the concerned citizens may be in attendance. They referenced that they might be this evening and can summarize their concerns. I guess I just like to remind the commission that, that federal law is, is very clear on the fact that we don't have jurisdiction over any potential health effects of these facilities. It's just outside of our purview. And with that, I'll begin the presentation. So the objectives are to discuss the proposed revisions, and there's actually, well, we have an alternative resolution, and I think we can do it with just an alternative action, and then make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. So I'm quickly going to recap what we left off on March 3rd, and then go over some proposed revisions, go over that question of noticing, the applicant's self-noticing, which we left open, and then, and then, yeah, the alternative action. So the concern that was voiced by the planning commission last meeting really was one of kind of social justice among different communities within Humboldt County, ensuring that all citizens, including the most rural communities, have access to at least basic communication services. This question highlighted that the more rigorous conditional use permit process constituted a potential roadblock for some of these projects out in rural areas, and you directed staff to consider some different pathways to allow for a tier one for projects in these more remote parts of the county, including timberland production zone, TPC, and also agriculture-exclusive AE lands. So we went and we took a look. This was something that the director had mentioned at the last meeting to add into the purpose of the ordinance itself, the phrase "to expand service to unserved and underserved areas." And we think that the effect of adding this would be to, you know, for all future staff and commissions, to remind them that part of the mission of this ordinance is, in fact, to expand service to these areas and to have that as a, as a guiding principle and guiding purpose. The second addition was in the text of tier one. And one, one proposed addition is that new small cell wireless facilities and non-small cell wireless facilities in area with tribal lands, general plan, land use designation, would be a ministerial pathway. I mean, this is an area, these are areas that the county doesn't have jurisdiction over. And so just being very clear about that on the front end, that we are not going to get in the way of any projects. There's going to be no conditional use permit requirement on projects with a tribal lands designation. And then the second addition being that new small cell wireless facilities and non-small cell wireless, small cell wireless facilities that meet the definition of a public use would also have a ministerial pathway, and I'll go over what that means briefly. To quickly summarize the areas with tribal land, land use designation, the general plan, we've got Roneville Rancheria here and Blue Lake, and then very significantly, the Hoopa Square here, and then all the way along the Klamath River. So these are areas that regardless of, regardless of zone, would not be subject to conditional use permit requirements. And then the, as far as public use, these are projects that are operated by government agencies. And so, you know, what qualifies as this would be, you know, any government agency. It could be Caltrans. It also could be a tribal government. So if a tribal government wants to put in a wireless telecommunications facility, we see that as being a facility that serves public health, safety, convenience, and general welfare. And so if it is the tribal government applying, they could have a ministerial pathway in any zone. And so those are, those are the two ways that we saw to make adjustments in tier one that would meet some of the objectives that the planning commission had outlined. I also want to mention that there are some significant projects in the works right now, some of which would, these would, would apply to. One is that Yurok Connect, which is a Yurok-owned entity that provides telecommunications services. I got $2.1 million in, in, I believe, CARES Act funding, and it's to build facilities that are going to improve data transmission in areas of the reservation. And then also, the Hoopa Valley Tribe received California funds to deploy broadband to many parts of the Hoopa Valley. And, and then also, there is a, another fiber network project that more or less is proposed to follow the 299 corridor that would also facilitate future deployment of, of facilities along those remote stretches that are underserved and unserved. And so these two new designations in tier one cover a fairly broad swath of potential projects. However, clearly, there still remain large areas that wouldn't have a tier one pathway. But kind of as a, as a note, thought it might be important to add that the, the process of, you know, putting in a wireless telecommunications facility is, is complex, it's expensive. County permitting is one of many considerations. We suspect that a larger consideration of many companies might be potential low demand in areas and, and especially in some of these rural areas. And so while certainly not wanting to, you know, totally minimize the, how big of a piece the permitting process would be, because it is an important consideration, also just wanted to add the, the context, I suppose, of, of thinking that that really is just a fraction of, of the concerns, and that a conditional use permit process still does leave the door open for projects in, in these more rural areas. And then switching gears to the question of noticing that we left open, in particular for the design review projects, you know, the special permit and conditional use permit, they have, they have a built-in, our noticing procedures. But the design review, really, we just have this line saying, you know, anyone who's, oh, sorry, anyone who specifically requests notice of action in order to appeal it can do so, but, but the question is open, is how would they know to appeal it? And, and so one of the options that I presented as an alternative to include was this, this alternative of self-noticing, of having the applicant provide evidence to our office, the planning department, that they have sent notice to their neighbors in their vicinity. And I was asked to come back with a list of jurisdictions that, that practice this, that have this as their protocol. And this is a partial list. It seems like almost certainty that there are more. It's not universal, but San Diego County, City of San Mateos, City of Lawn Beach, City of Santa Rosa, and City of Larkspur all have some variation on having the applicant provide notice to, to neighbors. So a couple potential alternative text inclusions would be that the applicant shall provide evidence that they've sent notice to all landowners within 300 feet, or that the applicant shall submit a mailing list, envelopes stamped and addressed for all properties within 300 feet. So if the planning commission is interested in including that, you know, you can. And so staff recommends that you receive public testimony, deliberate and comment on the draft wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance, and then, and then move to approve. We think that creating, we think that the ordinance as it's presented right now is exempt from SEQA. Staff believes that creating a very broad pathway for ministerial approvals throughout TPC and AE would likely require SEQA analysis of the ordinance and, and potentially significant impacts on biological, cultural, and other resources. So we think that if we were to create the broad ministerial pathway, the broad tier one for TPC and potentially AE, that that, that that would probably mean that we would need to do some additional environmental analysis on the ordinance. And then there is the, an alternative action, which if you find that this is not adequately implementing the general plan, that, that the commission could elect to, could, to take this evening. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for staff? All right.
What did you say the second alternative was? If we didn't feel like it met the requirements, we could, did you say table it, or?
Do you want to repeat your, the second alternative?
Absolutely. Yeah, hold on one moment. I'll get the screen back up. Okay. So based on evidence in the staff report, public testimony recommend that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors find the proposed ordinance does not adequately implement the general plan and direct staff to amend the draft ordinance to include a ministerial pathway for facilities in timberland production zone and agriculture-exclusive zone, including the completion of all required environmental analysis. And this is, this was based on what, what I heard from the planning commission last meeting, which was that there was interest in having broad pathway, broad tier one pathway throughout TPC and AE lands.
Melanie has a question, so go ahead.
Yes, thank you for repeating that. So the last time we looked at this, I think that what a few of us were hoping to see were some opportunity zones in the TPC or AE where a conditional use permit would not be required, and those opportunity zones would have been selected to avoid additional environmental analysis. That is, those opportunity zones would be areas that are already well-accessed with roads and are, you know, likely to not introduce any additional environmental effects that would trigger a, a SEQA analysis. So I don't know if you looked at trying to find a few spots where opportunity zones might be available, because I, I don't think any of us wanted necessarily a blanket, you know, opportunity zone. I know that I personally specified that I would have liked to have seen opportunity zones rather than just saying that everything in the TPC and AE would not have to have a conditional use permit. And the reason why some of us wanted this, of course, is because, you know, we believe that it's our responsibility for, you know, as a, as a county to look at, for example, some of our rural people and, you know, the areas of need and try to craft policy that addresses those needs. And I personally feel like having a few opportunity zones where a conditional use permit isn't required would be just a little bit of extra encouragement for applicants to go to those areas.
Thank you, Melanie. Thomas, you have your hand up, and then the director, and then Brian.
So I just got to make sure I'm hearing this right. So opportunity zones, but why, what about the site-specific biological assessment? Because you say TPC. Everything I've dealt with in TPC is just cannabis and timber. So in those ones to meet the biological assessments, you have to do NSO studies. So is that, or am I hearing that it's, for a cell tower, that you don't have to do site-specific biological assessments, or am I mishearing that?
So thanks for the question. I think that it's really important to look and see what we tried to do. This is not a blanket exemption for all cell towers in AE or TPC. This is specifically targeted to governmental entities. And, and so it's, it's very prescribed, very narrow, very limited.
Are you referring to the alternative at this point?
Well, the, no, the alternative is, would be very broad.
Right. Okay. I was referring to the alternative.
So I, I want to go there now. And one of the things that it's very hard for us to know is how a site, I mean, we could identify opportunity zones, but if they don't fit within the radio frequency needs of a particular carrier, they're, they're really useless. And, and so there's a lot of work that goes into laying out cellular systems and where the towers get placed to provide access to, to those radio waves. And without knowing where those towers are needed for carriers, that's literally looking for a needle in a haystack for us. We could identify a lot of different things. We could spend a lot of time looking for a lot of different sites, but none of them may be usable.
Okay. So if I understand you correctly, we just don't, as a county, have a good understanding of where the telecommution, telecommunications needs are, are greatest?
We don't, and part of the struggle with that is that it's often based upon demand and use areas. And so one of the things a lot of carriers are trying to do right now is get a higher percentage of coverage for indoor use and for wireless use, for internet use. A lot of areas are, are only good for like vehicular use or, or outdoor use. And, and it depends on what the, a particular carrier's needs are in terms of providing service, where they would try to stick towers. It's, it's really hard for us to know, and frankly, most carriers don't know what they would want to do until, I think, unfortunately, they're largely complaint-driven, where people are saying, "I don't get coverage here." And when they get enough of those complaints, they start to prioritize developing sites to address those complaints.
Right. Thank you for that. I understand that. And, you know, I guess, I don't know if it would be possible, but I'm wondering if you have any ideas on how permitting could be, I don't know, maybe made a little more appealing should a carrier decide to do this? Just as you probably well know, if we leave it to market conditions, it may well be that our rural areas never get any of these towers, right?
Well, I didn't mean to interrupt. I apologize.
Please go ahead.
So one of the things, one of the, the, I, I think the brilliant things... So, one of the things, one of the, I think the brilliant things that Keenan and Michael have come up with here is that they have these tiers. And a tier one is where we want them to go. And there's an incentive there, because the permitting requirements are far lower. The threshold to permitting is way low. And then there's areas where we're not so sure we want you to go there, but we're not closing the door. We're leaving the door open. So there's a whole graduation of permit types and incentives, if you will. And then one of the things that Mr. Hilton was saying that's really important to consider is when you're in those areas that require more discretion, are harder to permit, probably require environmental review, then at that point, the permitting requirements become a very small portion in relationship to the cost of just constructing that facility.
Thank you very much.
Brian, you had a?
Yeah, I guess I'm just going back to the different descriptions of the alternative. I remember it more the way Melanie was describing it, in that there are certain areas that don't have coverage, and they also don't have the type of zoning that would allow them to have a streamlined path. So in that case, could we, could we have basically a pathway for them to use resource lands, but that it excludes the resource lands from anywhere that has any of these other land uses that, you know, we really do want them to go on?
So I recognize the commission's desire to create kind of a Ian MacGargan design with nature kind of system of overlays. At this point, that would be very, very difficult to do for wireless telecom sites, because we would be scanning the areas and then saying, "Okay, we don't, we, you know, they're spotted out here. There's old growth redwood here. We really don't want you to go there." We could do that. But on the other hand, when it comes to the CUP process, those are the discussions that a astute site feasibility team for a wireless telecom carrier are going to look at themselves anyway. They're going to, just because they don't want to deal with that stuff, start to weed those out.
Going that approach would make me feel more comfortable. Lastly, I think this was stated, but, you know, we got a couple of emails. I just want to clarify 100% that all that we can look at as a commission is land use and any of the, I believe is in the presentation, any health hazards or anything that would be potential from the wireless communication we cannot look at on a permitting. Is that correct?
That is correct. We are specifically barred by federal law to consider potential health impacts when making decisions about wireless telecommunications facilities.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right. Any other questions for staff before we open this up for public comment? All right. See you then. I'll now open this up for public comment. It looks like we have one hand up. Ash.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, sorry. By the way, I just can hear my dog, too. I guess I'd first like to say, the biggest concern I hear is that, you know, the assumption that your hands are tied, that there's nothing you can do about health implications. There's always something you can do. If enough of us say no, then, you know, we can do something. And that happened in, like, I think it's Mill Valley. Like, their city council came forward, and they blocked, or at least they limited, the 5G rollout in their area. So, and it's possible. It's something you can do. And that, there's lots of things that the federal government says, you know, "You don't have jurisdiction. You can't do this." But we live here. I think we have more jurisdiction than people who live, you know, across the country, you know, and don't live here. I think it was like 2017, Rex Bone, he went down and spoke in opposition to 5G at the state assembly, you know, asking similar questions about the impact of 5G on our community. And, you know, besides how ugly the fake tree antennas are, I got a couple of those in my neighborhood, there are legitimate environmental health impacts to consider, and health impacts. Two major environmental factors to consider, all humor aside, are the birds and the bees. 5G technology has been proven to alter bird migration and kill off bee populations. And there's links to studies for that and the emails I sent you all. Additionally, real concern for the impacts on human health, currently for the FCC RF EMF safety guidelines, are based on wireless technology from 1996. And that was a while ago. As we all know, technologies came a long way since then. This latest generation, 5G, is completely new and different, using millimeter waves that require many small cell towers to function properly. They even use our own cell phones with LTE technology to rebroadcast the signal, increasing personal radiation exposure. Millimeter wave technology is also present in our military's active denial system, a crowd control weapon which makes a person flee due to the sensation that their skin is burning. Like the telecommunications industries, the 5G military claims that the radiation does not penetrate enough into the skin to do serious damage. But it does. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I'll be in there.
So you got my dog and my kid weighing in on this, too. But anyways, yeah, it does, like, get deeper into the skin through our sweat glands.
Your time's up, sir.
Okay. But I sent you all this in an email, but please consider it. You can do something. Everybody's just got to try. Thank you.
Thank you. Public 7108.
Yes, this is Bonnie Blackberry. And I'm also concerned about this. Don't consider the health impact. That should be foremost, is the health impact. But I did have a question about what is considered a valid impact. Is it seen in values everywhere or just in certain places? And also, having the notice, the five-day notice, well, if you mail something, could take a couple of days to get to the post office. A lot of the rural areas don't have at-home delivery, so they have to go into town. And many people don't go into town every day to pick up the mail. So I think that five-day notice is inadequate. And I would hope that someone is planning something like this, that there would be some immediate outreach, and more than just the parcels that are next to it or within 300 feet. That really doesn't take in much room as far as what the public may feel are impacts that you're not aware of. So what is a valid impact? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this topic? See you then. I'm going to close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. All right. Any other thoughts on this?
I guess I'm, I'll speak, I'm troubled by why you can't talk about the health concerns surrounding this. I'm not, I just don't understand why that would be a condition that's put on this. It just seems troubling that our government would say you can't have that discussion. It's just something I'm throwing out there. It doesn't make sense to me. Where do we want to go with this? We're just making a recommendation for the supervisors, so.
Well, it seems like there was a few areas where there were multiple options. Can we just go through those and do like a straw vote? And if we can get to consensus or a majority, make that a recommendation? And as far as the last topic, which is the, you know, the agricultural and timberlands, you know, maybe we can have staff take our ideas and try and come back with something that would, you know, not be in violation of the law, and not open it up to everywhere, but allow certain places that have no other ability than to put it in TPZ without requiring them to go through extremely expensive studies and processes.
Go ahead, Thomas.
So, I hear the social justice part and all that kind of stuff, but I also, social justice from another part is legacy operators in another industry, and they have to go through a lot of those biological assessments. So, if the commission wanted to go forward and just say it's okay to surpass all these biological assessments, I hope the social justice was the same for other things. That's where I have a sticking point to support that idea of not having biological assessment.
Oh, we're not suggesting that anyone go without biological assessments. The suggestion is to choose, let's put out a number, seven spots within rural Humboldt County that wouldn't trigger a biological assessment, because they're in a location where, that biological assessments wouldn't be required for this type of project. That is the request. We're not asking that, you know, the planning staff suggests spots that would require a biological assessment. And indeed, it's the opposite. We're suggesting that maybe seven spots, and, you know, understanding that this may or may not be that helpful, and that the applicants applying for these licenses may not be interested. They may not be in the right location for them. But it's at least an effort, I feel, on the part of Humboldt County to say, "Well, we've selected seven spots where the environmental impacts are negligible, that we would allow, you know, one of these people applying for a license to put in a tower without the conditional use permit."
Go ahead, Director.
Mr. McVor, I understand the point, and I understand the desire to create easier pathway in certain locations. For us to get there with this ordinance, we would need to do the biological assessment for those seven spots.
So, we don't have any offhand, I realize you may not have the entire county memorized, although I wouldn't be surprised if you did. But are there not parcels that you can think of, or zones that are already properly zoned in rural Humboldt County?
Well, if they're already properly zoned, they fit within tier one. And so then they're ministerial right now. We're really talking about TPZ and AE.
Okay. So even if they're TPZ or AE slash something else?
Well, if they're slash something else, say if there's, they're a mixed zone, and there's a zone there that would allow one of these to go with the tier one, they could, as long as they're within that zone, they could go with that location.
Okay. So mixed zones are?
Yes. It's just thinking specifically about TPZ and AE. If we're to say these go here without any future studies, and you know this from teaching CEQA,
Right.
Then the studies get done upfront.
Okay. And there are no areas where you happen to have already done those?
No.
Because that's what I was thinking, that there might be some areas that for whatever other reasons may have already been assessed.
Probably the sites that have received the most biological work are going to be sites that either have active timber harvest plans, or sites that have cannabis permits on them.
Right.
What if we looked at sites where there's, I mean, there's a lot of sites where there's already towers of different kinds, repeater stations for the county emergency services. A lot of the timber companies have their own sites that are in TPZ, where they have repeaters for their own communications, you know, within their company. So these are sites where there's already like type of operations happening, and many of them are in these locations that would be needed. You know, I can think of places in the Bald Hills where I know they are. Top of Titlow Hill has towers. Monument has towers. And their locations that were chose, you know, because they were in the right location to have these kind of towers. So it would seem that there's already a lot, a large number of these places out there.
Through the chair. If they were to put the facility on the existing structure out there, that would be considered co-location, and that would be ministerial. So, you, and that's, co-location means putting it on any existing structure.
Right, right.
So, that would be one ministerial way to get more services out to rural areas.
Most of those locations would not have towers that, that could happen. They would need new, bigger towers, from my experience working with these companies. So, that maybe wouldn't work. I just thought since the locations were already there, and the facilities were already there, that you could put a tower there with less, a new tower. Go ahead, Mike.
But aren't we talking about 5G in the rural areas, too? Which is the more insight in the lower use?
I don't know.
We're not talking about the big towers that we're used to seeing.
Yeah, I don't know enough to know where exactly they'd have to be.
We're talking really, go ahead, Keenan.
Yeah, I was going to say, in the rural areas, we're talking about big towers. The 5G, you know, these are antennas that serve an area that's like, I think, more or less 500 feet line of sight. So, I would anticipate if the rural areas ever get it 5G, it's going to be a very, very long time. Just my educated guess. So in the rural areas, we're talking about big towers that are probably providing, I mean, maybe in like, in a community hub, that, you know, you might have some of the small cell facilities. But on top of hilltops, you know, these are going to be big towers.
Well, I would agree with Chair Bongio, you know, and others amongst us, that, you know, given that some of these areas might have existing older technology, they could be selected out for opportunity areas?
So, if you were thinking about adding like a second tower within an existing compound, within the existing fenced area of the telecom site, another thing that often happens is that in order to do what you're mentioning, telecom carriers will want to raise the height of the tower, because they need to get the vertical separation between antennas. And perhaps there's the ability to allow an increase in height of an existing tower in order to accommodate co-location. I mean, those are certainly options that are far less impactful than creating new sites.
We'd like to add that.
I mean, there's a lot of sites that would fit that type situation. It might be It might be that the, a lot of those sites are old and antiquated equipment that are there. If you had a, a carrier put a new tower there, then the, the things that are there could get put on that new tower and put up higher probably than what it's been. I know from being on the board at Humboldt County Service District, we share on our facilities with Humboldt Bay Fire. So they have, at our tank locations, they put repeaters so they have better coverage for their services. So it, it might be that it's a win-win for not only like county agencies that would have towers, but if you were to go to, say, our big timber companies, Green Diamond, Humboldt Redwood, um, and, and use the locations that they have towers on and say, you know, you let us put a bigger tower, you can put your equipment on this new, better, modern, bigger tower, better reception for you, backup generators, that kind of thing are going to be included in it. So what they may, yeah, what they may not have had, they may have a better situation. It's a win-win for everybody in the long run. So I, I think you'd be surprised how many of those locations are out there because I can just, you know, from all my years at being on, in different areas, I can think of, of locations that are already existing. I bet I could come up with a dozen if I, you know, thought about it tonight. I'm, it, why, and there's, there's a reason those locations were chose because they get the most coverage. I mean, I think it'd be pretty simple to come up with a list of where those are. I think you could start off with your county OES people and they could tell you all the ones that are county-owned already.
I would submit, we, for the ordinance, we don't need to come up with a list of them. We just need to identify that to reuse one of those, here's the criteria that you're, you go to tier one. You can increase the height, it's tier one. Of an existing facility. If you've got an existing facility, here's what you get to do.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
There is a new law that's come in to affect fairly recently. Uh, Mr. Hilton, could you explain that to the commission so we don't get sideways relative to a site that doesn't have a conditional use permit on it?
Oh, that's right. Uh, so if, I mean, so this is specific to a, a ministerial approval of a telecommunications facility. And so if there was been a previous ministerial approval of a telecommunications facility on a site, the, the co-located facility has to be a discretionary, uh, permit. But I believe we can make that, uh, design review and it would, uh, be, I believe I talked this over with Natalie and that that would be okay. Um, one, one additional, uh, concern that I wanted to flag, uh, was that I did get a list, uh, in the referral response from CDFW of the specific, the specific, uh, triggers for additional review and for, that, that caused bird collisions, for example, um, with towers. And so I do think that it would be important to, if we were to come up with this, to build the CDFW recommendations into, um, any streamlined process in these more remote areas that I think would be potentially more hazardous to birds.
So I think that's a great idea about possibly repurposing some of these existing areas, but the, my big question, and, uh, would, if there's patrol, any petroleum or flammable products on site, would these repurposed sites be required to at minimum have a vehicle turnaround for fire safety, safety, either a hammerhead tee or a turnabout or something? Because I, I can name, I know one specific that doesn't have that. And secondly, you guys mentioned generators. I hear all these concerns about generators when it comes to other industries. Um, would there be any decibel limits on that? Because I know when this last power outage happened, you know, I was listening to probably about 75 decibels or something like that, 65, 75 decibels, so. You know, temporary use. It, it is what it is, I'm not trying to over-regulate things, I just bringing up things because I'd like to see parity, whatever that parity may be.
So through the chair, with, um, currently in the draft ordinance, it says that all applications for new facilities shall show adequate access, turnaround area and parking for emergency response vehicles. So that is a standard for, um, emergency. And there, there are, uh, let me find the noise limits. So I think, I think it's a 60 decibel limit, um, and then a 50 decibel if it's in a residential area or if it's a ministerial approval.
So for the, uh, areas that, or for the sites that are being repurposed, we could add that top, parking and turnaround requirement into that at the same time to make sure that that's addressed. We could also make sure the sound requirements are, are addressed when a site is repurposed.
So are we ready to go through the several places where there's a staff recommendation and alternative and make those selections and then direct staff to come up with the wording for the repurposing of existing facilities, um, in, in incorporating the new federal guidelines or CDFW guidelines and the fire turnaround stuff?
I believe we could do that. Does that work for you, Director, if we do it that way?
Yeah.
Okay. So would Keenan lead us through that or?
Yeah, Keenan, if you'd go back to your PowerPoint and we can walk through the, uh, different options that were presented.
Okay, great. So, um, the, the alternatives that we presented had to do with noticing. And so, um, again, to, to quickly summarize, there, there are limits on how much money we can take in, uh, from an applicant on, um, for the, some of these permits to, this is just something that the FCC decreed and, um, that amounts that they consider reasonable. And they don't really account for, um, the, the cost of noticing. And so a solution that some jurisdictions have come up with is, uh, having the applicant notice the neighborhood. So as it's drafted right now, uh, we don't have that incorporated into it. Um, we just have a notice of final action that's sent to the applicant and any person who requested it. And again, this is really, this is for, um, the projects that, that are, have a ministerial or design review pathway. Uh, so these are going to be the small cell facilities and invisible, uh, non-small and co-located facilities. So that, really the facilities that have the least, uh, visual impact. But again, they could be in a residential area or they could be, um, there could be concern essentially. So, so the question is how, if we want notice to go out, how does it get sent out? And, um, the, and the two alternatives that the commission could elect to include, these are just two examples that I pulled from other jurisdictions, um, are that the applicant shall provide evidence that they sent notice to all landowners and residents within 300 feet, uh, within a 10-day period prior to application submission. So they are sending out their own notice of application. Or they shall submit a mailing list, envelope stamped and addressed for all properties and then it would come from, we would mail it out, but they would have provided, uh, they, they would have incurred the expense of the noticing. So those are, those are the alternatives that we have prepared this evening.
So Brian, you're suggesting that we, right now, we do a straw vote and pick one of these two?
Yes. And just to be clear, is there a staff recommendation on this one? Or is this just?
Yeah, so, uh, so I guess, to, to be clear, I guess there are three alternatives. One is leave it as it is, which does not have any, uh, noticing requirement for notice of application, just the, uh, notice of final action to anyone who requested it. Or these two. And yeah, with this one, you know, Michael and I talked it through and we wanted to get direction from the planning commission. This is not typical for our, uh, our process, but you know, we're having to shape our process really to a large extent to the regulatory framework that we're fitting within.
Okay, well, I like the first one. It seems like it takes the workload off of staff for the most part and doesn't add additional cost and, and staff resources to be able to, uh, effectuate it.
Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to make a slight change to that and say that they sent, um, Keenan, can you put that back up, please?
Oh.
That they sent a county-approved notice.
Not just a notice, but a county-approved notice?
Yeah, so that there's certain language that's in there to make sure that people are getting the information they need to have to make a decision.
The, the right, right stuff, so to speak. And I would agree with that as well. I like that alternative requirement as well.
Thomas, go ahead.
That Commissioner Mitchell said almost everything I planned to say, basically saving on staff time, less workload on staff and, I mean, yeah.
See, and you said we never have your back, Director, earlier when we were doing maps. We're looking out for you here.
All right, so are we all in agreement that, to go with number one on our first and then we'll just keep moving to the next?
Yes.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So let's go to the next decision.
That, that was the only one that, uh, that I had highlighted. The other alternative was just, uh, to, to send us away to do CECL analysis on, uh, providing a broad pathway for approvals. And so we came up with, um, another, another idea through brainstorming, the commission did. And so, um, and so that really was the only alternative that I had to present this evening.
So then you'll bring us back at the next meeting or, I mean, I'm?
We can do this two different ways. You can give us the direction to take it forward to the board or you can direct us to bring back the final language to you. Um, we're, we're fine either way. We understand what you want relative to the repurposing of existing facilities and, uh, and choosing alternative one there. If you trust us to pass that recommendation forward to the board, we're perfectly happy to do that.
Are you okay with that, Brian?
I'm, I am. The one, the one question in my mind is that this is really specific to cellphone or towers or certain types of towers. And it sounds like there might be older generations of technology repeaters or, um, and just to make sure that we define what all can be included in existing facilities so that, um, companies can take the most advantage of this. And it doesn't have to be just an old cellphone tower. It could be something that they use for a line of sight, you know, communication plan.
Yeah, any large tower, whether it be a repeater tower where there's two big drums on either side sending beams off and receiving beams, or even a radio tower, you're, you're, you're thinking that a tower is a tower?
I'm thinking a tower is a tower and I'd like to spell that out so that, uh, when the companies are going through the criteria, you know, they're, they're not just assuming we're talking about one type of facility, which is a pre-existing cellphone tower.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't interpret it like that anyway, but that's a different story.
Mike, you had a question?
And I'm in agreement with that as well, Commissioner Mitchell, um, to make sure that that is spelled out, that, um, all existing facilities with towers, um, would be available for upgrades. And I think that would help with the accessibility for, um, our underserved communities in Humboldt, uh, in order to get this new technology out as much as possible and as quickly as possible. Allow that to happen on the existing facilities with the turnarounds and, um, making the height higher so that they can be reused, so to speak, or recycled. I like that word.
I'm, I think, just hearing you say that, it, we may want to word it more that it's an incentive to them to do this so that they can get better towers taught higher to, to, instead of, they may be reluctant because of liability reasons or whatever to do it, but if there's a bone in there for, for them to allow it to happen at that location, there, they may be, uh, much more willing to do it, so.
Well, I think.
I agree.
Uh, yeah, and I think by making it easier to just use those existing facilities and not have to revamp or reinvent the wheel.
Right.
Where recycling what they already got and what is on there would help with all of our rural areas as quickly and as much as possible.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, I, I agree with Chair Bongio. I think it is important to include in the language that we want to incentivize this because that best captures, you know, what we've been working for, for the last month.
Go ahead.
There was also a question, the last time we talked about this, about church facilities and their, it sort of getting less requirements. And some of us had concerns if they, if the churches were really surrounded by residential areas. Did we already take care of that and make that change or do we need to address that still?
I, I think that was relative to the discussion on the safe parking ordinance.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me. We're done.
So do you have enough direction there, you think? Is everybody okay if, if this just? Who was that?
That, that was, that was me. If I can.
God, is that you again?
The eye in the sky.
Well, um, so through the chair and perhaps, you know, the director already got this, but I, just, uh, for my own notification, uh, we're saying that it's, um, I mean, it's not co-location because it's going to be a new tower, but it's a new tower at a site that is already developed with another tower, that there is some sort of pre-existing tower there. Is that the?
Yes, and, and the thing is, Keenan, it's like not only a new tower, but they could or rebuild or extend the existing tower. So we are very much incentivizing them to go to existing telecom sites and incentivizing their ability to repurpose those sites. And, uh, that could be, that could happen in several ways.
Okay, great. And then also, um, to, to elaborate on the incentive, uh, component, that I guess in my mind, the, the primary incentive that the ordinance now offers is the more streamlined permitting process. That is, is that enough of an incentive, um, but then otherwise meeting, you know, the requirements of the zone, um, and, you know, following the recommendations using the guidance of CDFW, especially with regard to potential impacts on birds. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Well, I, I would want to clarify that the existing towers may be owned by a timber company and we're talking about incentives for both the telecommunications company and the timber company. the timber company so that they're both getting something out of it and it forms a synergy and a, a desire to go down that path together. So, so that's why I think that allowing them to rebuild, raise the height or other such benefits, that's what's in it for the current owner. Them getting a streamlined cellphone ordinance doesn't help a timber company, per se.
All right, so the question is then, do we want this to come back to us or do we want the staff to just take our recommendations and, and send them to the supervisors?
I, I'm in agreement to go for.
To send it straight to the supervisors?
Go to the supervisors. They, they've got what we want, I believe, and we might as well, let's get it on to the supervisors so we can get this started.
I'm fine with that. Is everybody else?
I'm, I'm verbally good with that. I was doing a head nod too, but yes.
Yeah, I just.
I'm in agreement with that.
You seem a little reluctant, Brian, that's why I asked. I just want to be clear that we're all on the same page.
I'm fine just taking a look at the final product and if, if the final product didn't meet what my understanding, the meaning of our minds was, then I'll speak to the supervisors and say, there's this one change I think you should make. I'm fine with that. I.
Do you think, Director, that we'd have time to bring it back to us to see?
Could I just recommend that you continue it to the meeting of April 21st and we will bring the revised language back to you at the next meeting?
Okay, as long as there's no time-sensitive issue that's going to make that big of a difference.
Can you turn that around this week, Keenan?
I, I'll, I'll give it a yes.
Thank you.
That's our boy. Good job. Okay, so we'll look forward to seeing that then.
Well, I'll motion to continue it to the April 21st meeting.
Second.
Can I make a request? When that presentation comes forward, can we get presented only the languages, the language that was changed from tonight to whatever was changed from this draft? So that way, in the essence of time, is all that I was requesting.
How about a, like a strike through and like highlighted is new, strike, strict, you know, strike through is removed and?
Yeah, we will provide.
That makes it easier, just goes to those few areas.
Okay, so we had a motion, we had a second. Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Affirmative.
Nice. All right. Motion carries unanimous. So that brings us on to item number I, report from planner, requests to schedule a special meeting on May 12th.
Yeah, so the, a project you're probably somewhat aware of is the Nordic Fish Farm is making its way to the planning commission. We plan on bringing a workshop to the commission on April 21st to begin to introduce the project to you. This will not be a meeting at which you can take action in. We really just intend to present the project, present the EIR, allow the commission, the public to ask questions about the project to achieve an understanding of what the project description is, how it's been addressed, how it's been evaluated. So it's really an informational time. We believe that this project deserves a full meeting and are wondering if the commission would be willing to schedule a special meeting on May 12th or even consider one at this There's a possibility we may not be able to make that and I, I don't want to schedule the meeting if we don't. And by April 21st, we will absolutely know if we can make that May 12th meeting or not. And what it really comes down to is completing the final EIR. We have the administrative draft right now we're working on. And, and so we're working through that. There's always things in EIRs that take more time than you think they're going to take. And so I, I would just ask the commission's consideration if you'd be willing to consider the possibility of a special meeting on May 12th. If not, that's okay, but if you do, I'd like to just put it on the, or pencil it at this point into the calendar.
I'm fine with this.
It's, would this be the informational meeting or would this be?
No, this would be the actual beginning of the public hearing.
Okay.
April 25th was the, April?
The informational meeting will be April 21st.
21st, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the next, your next meeting.
Yeah.
And then the public hearing would start on May 12th.
Okay.
One of the things I'm trying not to do is get them too far apart so that there's the informational meeting and then within a few weeks, the, the actual public hearing.
This is sort of an unrelated or tangentially related question, but say I had a commitment out of the county that day, the way we're doing this so that the public can monitor and the staff can present, are we allowed to participate over Zoom if we ever couldn't be at a special meeting like that?
We would need to research. We believe there is, we need to research that.
Okay. Because I, I do have a scheduling conflict location-wise, but I could, Seth, I definitely want to be able to participate, so. You can let me know if I need to make other arrangements for my, my business trip.
I, I believe the supervisors have the ability to be in their meetings by Zoom.
One of the, one of the supervisors just did it. Not sure what had to happen for him to do that, though. So that's what we need to know.
Wouldn't you, it would just, as long as you could do it, you'd have to post wherever you're at that you are, that you're part of that meeting. So if anybody wanted to join you and? Yeah, so I mean, it shouldn't be that. As long as, Josh is probably the guy to ask if he can patch you through. Okay.
I put it in my calendar. As long as it's 6:00 PM and not 5:00 PM.
Yeah.
That would be my only request.
Very good, thank you very much.
All right. I, funny, but three hands popped up from the public. Should I open it up for public comment on this?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I'm going to. It doesn't, it seems like it was just informational, but I'm going to open this up for public comment and the first caller is Ash.
Hello? Yeah, my hand was actually still up from the previous thing. I was just, one suggestion was to change setbacks to 1,000 feet from 300 feet. That's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you. The next caller would be Jay Rafferty. You there, Jay? Okay, we'll move on to the next is 6011. Go ahead. Star six to unmute.
Hello?
Yes. Welcome. Go ahead, 6011. You're muted still, six, star six to unmute.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Um, I was also from the previous discussion and along the same lines, I was kind of curious as to what the 300 feet was about because in rural communities, I, I don't think there's really too many properties within 300 feet of a cell tower. So I, I'm kind of unclear as to how people would have a voice in that.
Well, you can go to the supervisors now and talk to them about it because we moved it on.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next caller is 5457. Star six. Just this, yeah. 5457, star six to unmute yourself. Okay. Yeah, that's true. Okay. I'll try one more time. 5457, are you there? Star six to unmute. All right, I, I don't know if they're with us or not, but I'm going to close the public comment. So, yeah, and this will be brought back at the, at the next meeting. The, the last topic will be brought back at the, on the cell tower or on the, the communication will be brought back, so you will have another opportunity to speak on it. All right. So with that, that brings us to item J, adjournment. Is there anybody who has anything before we adjourn to, to say or bring up? Director, anything else you want to? Nope. So with that, I will call this meeting adjourned. We'll see you in two weeks.